Call a meeting to order. Brian, if you would record the attendance. Chris is unable to join us. He is on the road. So to speak, we're on the plane, one or the other. Uh, if you could. Much allegiance to play.
Much allegiance to the United States of America. The two of them, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd make a motion. We approve the current agenda.
Support.
We have a motion that's been seconded to approve the current agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yes. A. Like to ask to disclose any conflict of interest there may be. Related to the project that will be before us tonight.
None. None.
None. Okay, none noted. Thank you. Moving on. We have meeting minutes from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. These were developed by Scott. Was primarily.
Can I, can I speak about this?
Sure.
These were actually created by a former member Merlin. And a great deal of time has passed. So I think. In actuality, all of the members of the subcommittee. Kind of uh. Threw in their, if you will. Notes to try and and put these minutes together, because what happened is right after that meeting, remember Merlin. Was on a leave of absence for some medical reasons. And so they, so that didn't get done right away and time passed and. And so we all kind of contributed to try and put together as best we could. I think there's a few spots where there are a little overreaching, maybe. Uh, in talking about different opinions and some other things that are probably not as. Uh, relevant to the minutes themselves, but this is what we, this is what we have. And uh, so. I just wanted to touch on that. But we also, I sent them to manager Swayze because he was at that meeting to see if there was anything in particular that he thought needed to be added. And he didn't, he didn't make any changes to that.
In my input, dealt strictly with the typo issues, edits, simple stuff, what's the app wise, what is the thing?
Yeah, I took out there at one point, it said in there that we had the pledge leaders and the flag and some other things that I had. Done it because I chaired the meeting and I, we didn't do those things there because it wasn't the conference term. I know we didn't do the pledge leaving site that out of the of the draft that's before you. So. But I like, so I think there's. Minutes are supposed to be a reflection of what was discussed at the meeting. I think these go. A little further, if you read them, you can kind of tell what, you know, there's some, I don't want to say opinions, but there's some discussion about documents that were emailed and. Somebody's prior employment and stuff that's probably. More information than necessary, but it, but it helps uh, see the whole picture of what's being discussed. So. That's, that's where we're at.
And I think these notes will help a lot as we move forward with the new subcommittee focused on implementation of recommendations. Because there's a lot of detail.
Right, they're very detailed. Yeah.
Okay, uh. Any other comments from other board members regarding these meeting minutes?
I think just to clarify, like last time, we're accepting these minutes, but we're not approving these minutes.
Right.
So we're just acknowledging them being given to us.
As a matter of record.
Yes, that is correct. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Timmy, anything from you?
All good.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion for approval?
Acceptance.
For acceptance, excuse me.
Thank you.
Of these minutes.
Support. Oh, I, were you, I will move to.
I didn't think it was right for me to accept it because I was on the committee.
I'll make a, a motion to accept these minutes from the subcommittee.
Thank you. Can I have support?
Supply.
Thank you, Wendy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you, Eric. Accepted. Okay. Next one, approve the minutes of the March seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Can I, any comments or changes to be noted?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, Derek, Pedra. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None noted. Minutes approved. Okay. I'd now like to acknowledge visitors wishing to speak. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker, and this is for issues and items that are not related to Article Eight, which is the. Public hearing we'd like to have on uh, tonight's meeting. Does anybody even like to speak? Okay, none noted?
Anybody online?
Is anybody online?
There is one person online.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to Article Eight. Uh, case number twenty-two dash thirty-six ninety-five. Matt Downey, property address thirty thirty Wood Duck Lane. Brian?
All right, so the applicant's requesting a type one special use permit to allow for an accessory building over eight hundred thirty-two square feet. The property is located at the end of Wood Duck Lane, which is on the south side of Twenty-Eighth Street, east of Butcher Avenue. So the building will include a large storage section, a small heated shop area, then as well as a covered porch for a total size of three thousand four hundred fifty-six square feet. And it does have a height of twenty-two feet tall measured to the midpoint of the roof. So that height requires a setback of sixty feet to the side and rear property lines. They do show a setback of a hundred twenty-two feet, I believe it is, to the. Side property line and sixty and a half feet to the rear property lines. They'd be meeting both of those setbacks. The home on the property is actually currently under construction and the zoning ordinance does require. That it be at least fifty percent complete before a building permit is issued for the accessory building and the applicant has been made aware of that condition. So the applicant indicated that they plan to use the building for storage of an RV and other vehicles, as well as a kind of hobby woodworking shop in part of it as well. The building will have metal roofing and siding, which is not unusual in the agricultural zone areas of the township. So the size of the building is a bit larger than the average we had considering the size of the parcel. But we have approved a few similar sized buildings on similar sized parcels in the past now. So the applicant doesn't appear to meet our standards for an accessory building, so I'm recommending approval of the special use permit. With the three conditions listed in the staff report, which are that along with being in compliance with all other zoning regulations. The building is not used for living space or to run a business, that any outdoor lighting meets our regulations and that the. Home receives approval of the rough in inspection before a building permit for the accessory building is issued, because that's the point we would consider it fifty percent complete.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members? Tim?
I noticed this says that the area is wooded and hilly. Uh, I guess I would like to add the a fourth condition in there to meet our current stormwater ordinance. For stormwater runoff under the other lots.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else have other comments? Okay. Would the owner like to come up and? Tell us a little bit about the project and introduce yourself to us.
Thank you. I'm Matt Downey. Appreciate you having us here, having me here tonight. Other than having poor judgment of trying to build a barn and a house right now. We're really looking forward to doing it. So yeah, this is my, kind of our last house, our dream house. And my dream barn. So I have a, I'm a car guy. I have some cars I store in there. I have a boat that I store in the winter. Or hopefully, if we can ever recover from the building of the house, we're going to be buying an RV and that'll be stored in there. I'm also a woodworker and a hobby. I do everything from pouring resin to wood to model cars and. This is my special space out there. So that's, that's kind of what I'm planning to do. And um. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Any questions?
Just a comment. Could you tell me the brand boat and the brands of car?
You have to roll the cocktail when the barn's built and I'll show them to you.
All right. No, I uh. It sounds like a nice, a nice space. Thank you.
I just like to comment that as a licensed architect, I think the plans you've got look great. For perspectives, the color drawings you have really very effective in terms of displaying what you're looking at doing.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just give a call at the FBI buildings who is building it for us. He's been incredibly helpful for someone like me who's not only. Never built a barn like this, but also is trying to build a house at the same time. So.
Yeah, they did a great job, I think.
They did. Thank you.
Okay.
Scott?
If no one else has any other questions, the applicant, I made a commotion to go to public hearing.
Okay. Motion in support for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address this issue? None noted.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Anybody online? We had one person earlier.
She, she nodded, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, just, just wanted to confirm.
She gave the signal.
Okay.
I know. That's why I sit over here.
Close public hearing. Do I have a second?
Support.
Okay, we have. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, any further discussion? What do you want to make a motion?
I'd uh. Make a motion on case number twenty-two dash thirty-six ninety-five. That we approve the special use permit with the conditions as uh, as presented. And also making a note as trustee Nordic pointed out, Nordhook pointed out that you manage the stormwater properly, so it doesn't affect the neighbor.
Who supports it? Wendy, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None noted. Thank you. Okay. Article number nine, review of the draft planning commission rules of conduct.
Yeah, I'll give a brief introduction here. So similar to what we did with the bylaws, we reached out to the township attorney and asked them to draft. A set of rules of conduct, rules of procedure then for the planning commission. So they did provide those and put them in your packet here along with the. Copy of the current rules of conduct and then the copy of the most recent bylaws that we looked at too. So. These are here for your review. And then if you have any comments or requested revisions, we gather those tonight then and. We'll bring those back to the attorney to review and make those changes if needed.
Board members, do you have any suggestions or changes for rules of conduct or?
Just.
Bylaws?
Just one question, just to start. We're changing the name though to rules of procedure. Is that correct?
That's just, yeah, what the attorney put on there. I don't know if there was a specific reasoning or if that's what they've seen elsewhere.
Okay, because I was just wondering, we keep referring to them currently. As rules of conduct, which I'm used to them being called, but I know these are noted as being called the rules of procedure. So. If that's what we're gonna start calling them, then maybe that's what we should. I know. It's a weird, a weird one.
I, can I add something? I believe this would fall under number two D, if I'm not mistaken. I just throwing this out there and I don't want to get too buried in the weeds, but. I know a number of years ago, shortly after I became a planning commission member, I happened to have a case brought in front of the planning commission. And ironically. I, so I was the applicant because I was the president of a neighborhood association that was bringing the case and it involved my property. It was the subject property. And I was asked to not even be in the room. Which as, you know, the planning, as a planning commissioner, I understood that, but as the applicant. And the subject property owner, that made it a little bit more challenging for the group I represent. Because of course I was the most qualified and of course my wife had to come in, which was fine, she had to find that on our behalf as for our property. But I just, you know, when I'm reading this and it says specifically in here that you could be present, but. I'm wondering, I asked specifically asked Steve why he asked me to not even. Be here and his view was that even myself sitting in the audience, facial expressions. Because we're peers here would, could cause influence on all of you. And so his view was that I shouldn't be here. Now, this is of course before the time masks. No pun intended. I, so. Well, the reason I bring this up is I'm wondering if it should just, I guess, just as noteworthy that, you know, in some cases, maybe it's best to not. Be present if you don't need to be, you know, I had a spouse that was able to handle that. I had a vice president that was able to come in in my spot from that, from that respect, but. So I sat out.
And I. Part, I partly agree and partly don't. I think during the presentation part that maybe it would be beneficial if you, especially in the circumstance you just described. For you to be able to be here to be part of the presentation, especially if indeed it was a similar situation where you were the most knowledgeable person to be able to present. Especially to answer any questions, but I could see for voting purposes to ask that person to maybe step out in the hall. I guess, I mean, all of these are recorded and on Zoom, you can see who votes what whenever. So I don't know whether it would matter either way, but.
I hear what you're saying and I, you know, I guess the reason I brought this up is because when I look back, I think the information. That was presented and, and, you know. It, it was pretty good for the most part, but there were certainly some. Things that were asked of the planning commission that were not answered as accurately as they would have been had I been here. Did it matter in the end? It didn't, but maybe it would have been clear for someone in the public who had questions or, you know, down the road, maybe. There certainly were things that I would have, you know. Been able to answer that, that they, they were not, because I didn't expect that to be the way that it all went down. I found that out, you know, two weeks before.
And I think it's the public, I think it seems more, and this is just my opinion, respectful. Versus you not being there at all when it's talked about. It seems much more respectful for you to be there and be in the room and be able to talk about it. Especially if I were your neighbor and had questions. It seems to me it would be more respectful to have you be there for that portion.
Well, I guess that's why the way it's written here, it allows for that. And so I, I, I guess that's what I'm saying is I think that's a good thing. Because I don't think that's the way we're currently doing it.
Member Nordhook?
Other boards and committees, when conflicts come up like this, where you have a unique situation where you're the applicant. I see no problem with you presenting the case as an applicant. As a commission member or as a board member. And you have the conflict, what we normally had done in the past, but just wheel your chair back against the wall, stone face. You have no input. Anybody ask you question, you're, you're done. You had your presentation.
Right.
So I don't think you have to get up and leave the room. Just, you're done. You've got to just back up and excuse yourself. So.
But, and I think like you said, Scott, it allows, it says you may be present. I think in the past, we've talked about even stepping off the desk and sitting in the crowd. And I think that it's important that you be, that the person be allowed to be here and present. I think like you said, Wendy, it's all public anyways, so I don't really see a reason to specifically ask anybody to leave. But if there was a very contentious matter and anybody felt otherwise, we could always ask one of our peers to say, we might ask if you don't mind. Even then, I don't know, but I think the wording allows for a lot of leeway for the situation.
What are comments? Yeah, the one thing I would say is maybe add a word and that is, or two, three, in the audience, right? You may be present in the audience. And I think that's a good point. You shouldn't be present up here. You need, you can stay, but you need to be in the audience.
Yeah.
And I think that should be in there.
It says in the meeting room. Currently.
I just think.
Yeah, I think I like that.
That it needs, then you can't be here.
I think that's probably a. Puts the person over there instead on the side. I think that's, I think that's.
And I think the public would appreciate the separation.
Certainly, none of them are up here during their debate.
Right.
So. That's, do we want to make that suggested change?
I think if you struck meeting room and replaced it with audience, they may be present in the audience during the discussion to make a presentation and answer questions. I think that's very, very clear.
We need a motion or?
I don't think we need a motion, but no, I'll just, I'll just take notes down and then. Pass those on to the attorney afterwards, you know.
Okay.
I, one point on that as I'm reading it, this seems to only apply if the planning commission member is an applicant, applicant submitting an application. Right. It doesn't seem to be clear if it's just a conflict of interest, if they have to. Sit down or just wheel the chair back against the wall. So I guess.
Should be the same. If it's a conflict of interest, I think you excuse yourself to the audience.
It was in our previous, I believe, so maybe we need to add that letter F, because I think that talks about, oh, that's failure to disclose. I don't know if there's another spot.
NBC. Members disqualified from voting in the matter. But honestly, he talks up here in a discussion either, I don't think.
Right.
You should just say that's a conflict of interest and I'm excusing myself to the audience for the discussion.
Yeah, he talks about conflict of interest and we've, we've addressed that. We addressed that at the beginning in art of our meeting in Article Four. So I mean, if you came in and said, hey, we're talking about my neighbor's house and I'm helping him build it or something, you know, that we can determine if that's a conflict or not, but. I, I like the changing the word of D from meeting room to audience.
But B, you could put that into the member must publicly disclose the potential conflict of interest to the planning commission and excuse themselves to the audience. Where was they? With themselves to the audience, you know?
The previous ones stated that. To move from the place where the full commission is sitting and go sit in the audience or leave the room until the matter is over.
I think consistency with the other one, just joining the audience.
Yeah.
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 So something stating that that applies to all conflicts of interest, not only where you're the applicant, but.
Right.
All right. That'll work.
But it seems to fit in.
I think if the member discloses a conflict of interest. All of us can depict what the. Level is of the conflict and make a decision of, okay, yeah, you should sit in the audience. No, you need to leave. Yes, you can sit right here and just. You know, I think that as a disclosure of conflict, we're deciding as a group how to handle the conflict.
Where is that written though?
And then we have to take a vote.
And then as a applicant, that's a different scenario. So.
Where is what you just said written?
Well. Right. And I, that's what I think we're, we have a whole lot of extra words in here, but we don't have that. The, the meat of it, that the, you know, I, I thought it said under. E, if a, if a, if a member plans not to attend a meeting at which he or she has a reason to believe that the planning commission will act on a matter. Which the planning, which the member has a conflict of interest, he or she. Shall disclose to the chair of the meeting all facts material to the conflict of interest. The chair shall support or shall report the disclosure at. The meeting. So it doesn't, it kind of.
But that's.
Kind of gets there. That's before the meeting happens though.
And that's if you plan not to attend.
Right. Right, that's not.
And see, my, my concern is, and obviously we don't have a lot of public here right now, but if we're in a hot topic situation where there is public. Right? And, oh yes, I'm excused myself and you're like, I mean, the optics to the public of somebody just sliding their chair to the back. No, I'm sorry. I, I think. Remove yourself to the audience.
So maybe, maybe I'm seeing the.
Well, I think B discusses this, but I think it falls very short because it says before participating in a decision. Where there is a conflict of interest, it almost allows there to be participation if there's conflict of interest. And I think it needs to be explicit that. Like we're saying, if there is a conflict of interest, then you join the audience.
Before discussion and all that.
Right.
And voting and whatnot.
I think after it says, the member must publicly disclose the potential conflict of interest to the planning commission. And then it should say the planning commission will decide. I don't want to say the fate of the conflict, but, but you know, the planning commission will, will. Will determine the extent of conflict and uh. Procedure or measures to be taken.
I just don't know that I like the, the inconsistency with, in one hand, we're saying move to the audience. Why do we think it needs to go further than that?
Well, we said move to the audience was when they were a applicant.
Yes.
Right, but I'm saying for consistency, if they, if there was a conflict, there's still a member of the public unable to see.
When I, I think Scott has given an example in the past when he has noted a conflict in the beginning before I was here. And other members had decided that's not a real conflict. So I think that's where we get into, you'll disclose a conflict, but then. The planning commission will decide the extent of the conflict to decide whether this is a true conflict or not. And then. What was the rest that I said?
They'll determine what, when measures need to be taken, whether they just sit in the audience or.
Yeah.
Because.
Go sit in the audience or you can just stay and vote. It doesn't, you know.
It, it could be such a, a situation that. We feel it would be in that person's best interest to not be present in the meeting. But maybe they're under pressure to be here. And so having us say, you need to leave. You know, it might.
Yeah, but if you put that in the bylaws, so we don't even have to vote, that takes the pressure off and then takes the pressure off of us having to decide if it's a conflict.
It depends on the circumstance, because I could disclose a conflict that's barely a conflict. And now.
Right.
If we had measures saying I had to leave, that means I'd have to walk out.
No, 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 you go to the audience.
So, well, yes, but we've had a lot of times, we've had cases coming from the planning commission that were. For instance, somebody's working for a large engineering firm and they're, they're a planning commissioner and their firm is working on a project that they had nothing to do with. But they have to disclose that their employer and, and the planning commission was fine with that. I mean, this would happen on a, there are, there are times up here where it would happen almost every other meeting.
I just wonder if, if we could add a sentence at the end of B that said, if the planning commission collectively agrees that a. Conflict exists, then they would ask the member to join the audience for that portion of the discussion.
You want to say by a majority vote or?
I still think it's the extent of the conflict and what measures.
Right. I think it should be, they may ask the, the, the member to join the audience. Yes, or, or leave.
Leave, yeah.
Yeah.
It could be bad enough, like he's just his example, where if it was something that it seems like.
We don't know what's going to come in front of the planning commission down the road.
I guess I'm just questioning the leave part. Not that I, I don't really have a strong opinion about this. I'm just questioning the inconsistency with leaving in one case and not the other. If what we're doing is public and recorded and in the minutes, what's the harm of having them be present in the audience?
Exactly. Because once they're no longer up here, they're no longer a planning commissioner. They are a citizen and this is open to.
It, I, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a case where I would ask somebody to leave.
No.
Uh, I just, I just think that we should. Have that option in the event that that problem does arise. If there's a, a clear conflict and the person won't excuse themselves and we. Feel that collectively that they need to be excused, then we need to excuse them. I.
And I think we can ask them to join the audience. I just don't know if we can ask them to remove themselves from a public. Like they're, they're still a member of the public. They, I think they have a right to be present in the. Here.
You could be right on that. That would be a question for the attorney. Right.
Member Nordhook?
So let's throw another wrench in this.
The guy with a bag of wrenches.
So immediate family. Where does that stop?
Immediate family would be a conflict of interest. And so I would say, you know.
Cousin. Grandchild. In-law.
Yeah.
See, I remember participating in a training and they, they use the example of your neighbor. Is your neighbor a conflict of interest? If you have no vested interest unless you don't want something to happen, then they, their case was, it was probably more your duty to participate. If you were able to remove yourself from the mere fact that they were building a pole barn. Now, if you wanted to contest the fact they're building the pole barn five feet from your property, then that's a conflict.
Right.
So I use the same criteria for family. If your cousin. Lives across town and you have no vested interest in whether or not they build a pole barn, I question if that's a conflict. Unless you're the builder or.
I've, I've.
There is a cutoff in certain industries. You know, cousins are no longer immediate family, in-laws are no longer immediate family.
But, but that begs the question.
Same logic.
If you have a cousin who, somebody's building a barn and the cousin's coming in saying that barn is obstructing my view. Logic would dictate that you're probably going to vote in favor of your cousin.
Brian, is it possible to get, sorry, to get like the attorney's. Clear definition of conflict of interest as clear as we could possibly get from them? Because I know we're, we're arguing conflict.
I think, yeah, their definition is in those five items in A essentially.
I think, yeah, their definition is in those five items in A essentially. And that's in there. I'll know, and I know we had this conversation before. They just say where the planning commission member has a direct financial interest or. You know, the member has such close personal ties. And I know we had a conversation previously of, well, shouldn't it also include family?
Firm, that's number two.
And then what extent of family? So, so I think I can ask them for a clarification of, you know, should this include immediate family or how far that should spread? Cause I think. That's the planning commission's V, right? It should extend, you know, if your spouse has a significant, right? It should apply to them.
But I think it gives, it gives some leeway to say if. If they have such close personal ties, the applicant can't be expected to exercise sound judgment. I think that allows for the case where if it's a sibling and you have close personal ties and you, I just can't say no to my brother. That's different than if I feel like I could say no to my brother and I feel like that shouldn't be a conflict.
And I think that's part of sitting up here is that we should have some self-awareness to be able to disclose things that we can't be neutral on.
So I think that, I think that's something that, right, the member would disclose. Then in the first line of C. The planning commission, you know, reviews that to determine if you, the rest of the planning commission determines it to be a conflict of interest. So it gives the rest of the commission. So that member should be disclosing that. And then play other planning commission remembers review that to determine if it's, if they should excuse themselves to the audience or not.
So. Can we just ask the attorney if we should add? Eh, what their opinion is and adding to B that uh. What, how did we say this a minute ago? Remember Chris, did you said? How, how did we, how did we word this?
There's a conflict of entrance, you will be recused to the audience and you may be asked to leave from the room.
Depending on how the planning commission measures the.
Yeah. The planning commission will determine the extent, the extent of the conflict.
Right.
And determine.
And determine if the, if the member should be seated in the audience or remain.
So I should disclose the potential and you guys would decide that is.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Right.
I think it's always better to err on the side of caution. And I think we've seen good example of that. More often than not, somebody says, well, this could be a conflict and everybody says, thanks, but then not really.
So that last sentence, what the planning commission will determine the extent of the conflict and determine if the commission member shall.
Remain.
Do you?
Member of the planning commission or go to the audience.
Do you want to say if the conflict falls outside of those five listed above, or even if it falls inside those five, we still discuss it?
This is worded that we still discuss it, that you have, this is just some examples is how I read it. And then we still would go to B and C and do.
And then we would need a majority vote. And obviously the person who has the potential conflict would not be allowed to vote.
Right. Well, if they're in the audience, they've.
This is disturbing whether or not you're going to the audience. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, this would all be taking place under article four ideally, right? You disclose your potential conflict. And then I, my understanding, you'd still be able to vote on your other items at the meeting, but before we get to, you know, your article eight. You'd excuse yourself to the, the audience. And if it's been determined that it was a conflict.
I guess my question is then why are you even listing the, the one through five if we're going to discuss it? What I mean, and those aren't instant disqualifiers, then why are we even listening?
I, I almost think it should just say.
Well, I think because there's, there's.
There, I know there are guidelines for while you're doing your determination, you know, for the, believe it's under these five, then it should be.
I think they need to be there so that you have an understanding of what it is that we're looking for. It's a good reminder.
So what should we say plan in uh, like, but not limited to, and then the five?
It says shall include, but it's not limited to a matter pending in which the following five.
Oh, there it is. Yeah. Shall include it out. There you go. See, it's already in this.
So. We're good. But I think there, it'd be really worthwhile to clarify if a familial. Involvement is explicitly one of the five we want to list because that's not.
And it is, it's for.
This force has such close personal ties, but that doesn't explicitly say like a family tie.
Yeah. Family seems separate from.
That's what I'm wondering if, cause I, that's what I'm hearing, that that rises to a different level of close personal. Potentially.
So you know, I think close personal ties would encompass family, friends, lovers, whatever. I mean, yeah, you know. Uh, neighbors, right? Cause that's a, that's potentially a close personal tie too. So it encompasses more.
Yeah. Well, and again, I think we could keep going forever because realistically like your spouse's work. Is something you should disclose a conflict for, because you know, that's, could be way more important than your own jobs to be worried about.
Yeah.
It's just a, a, a few examples.
You almost need a big asterisk, but always err on the side of disclosing if you've ever let it out, disclose.
So let me make sure I got that last potential sentence under B. So the planning commission will determine the extent of the conflict and determine if the commission member shall be. Seated in the audience or removed from the room. Is that essentially what?
We said.
We decided.
Remain when they'll decide whether they'll remain a part of the voting, planning permission or be asked to go to the.
Maybe it should just say to the, to the ex.
If it is a.
I liked, I liked the wording where we said the planning commission will determine measurements to be taken, which may include moving to the audience. Then we're. We have some flexibility. We're not being, we're leaving it a little vague. And we may, we may, as uh, member Nordha, et cetera, earlier pushed a chair to the wall and they can sit stone faced. Or perhaps they go in the audience. You know, I mean, if somebody had a really serious conflict, I would think they would just say, I'm not coming tonight. Yeah.
What if you just say if, if it's deemed that there is a conflict, the member will be asked or could be asked to sit in the audience or. If it's.
Well, we talked about the leaving the room thing is not having, we probably don't have that authority, but I guess you could ask them that. But if it's, if it's a conflict to they, but I don't, I, I don't think. I don't think we can do that. I'm, I'm starting to, to.
I think some of the comment was made like it would be nice to have that in case that member gets out of hand or starts. I guess, you know, exerting their knowledge and of, and of the board against the board. Then you can, just like any normal member in the eye, appear person in the audience, you can, if they're not behaving in an appropriate manner, you can ask them.
Making plenty pieces. Uh, Brian, is that something we could ask the attorney about what, to what extent does the planning commission have to have a peer leave if. Uh, or a member leave if they're. If there's, if we believe there's a strong conflict and. They're not wanting to go.
Yep. Yeah, we can ask that.
Do we, uh, do they just get to sit in the corner or? Or what if they tell them to sit in the lobby?
Move from the board. I mean, what do you do at that point? No, I refuse to sit in the audience because I don't believe it's a conflict. And I think you guys are voting against me because.
I think, I'd like to see what the, what the attorney has to say. I'm guessing the way that would go down if the person refused is that we'd end up tabling the meeting and. And uh. Um, at some point that person would find an answer from legal counsel and.
Yeah, I'm curious if we, if trust in order, do you know if there's anything even at the board level to eject somebody from the audience?
Yeah, we call Omar.
But we don't have, there's nobody here to eject, but it seems like the, the ejection part is brought to the entire audience. And then. Once somebody's here is in the audience, then we follow that.
If you have an unruly board member or a member of the audience, then the chair contacts the sheriff's department and they come and remove it.
Okay. And then we would just table.
That's why we have the telephone up here that has no dial tone. That's, that's.
It's the red one.
And that door back there, that, that door is for Omar. He's on the other side of that door. And you know, he just comes barging through.
Thank you.
It happens.
I, I just think there should be a provision somewhere like just something for us to fall back on that. We don't have to say, well, we need to get this or that. Nope. It's in the bylaws. We have the right to do that.
I think it's good to have this laid out very clearly because, and I guess it didn't involve a. Board member though, but I've chaired a meeting where we had to have the police get involved because it became unruly and, and I've, you know, it's. I've had to use a parliamentarian before during a meeting and it's just to have this stuff very clear. Uh, so that when those conflicts arise and somebody comes in and you can say, well, here's the rules. This is what's happening. It, it, you gotta have that stuff where, you know, it's got to be clear and, and really that the chairperson needs to. Understand it well, because you don't plan for that type of conflict to occur in a room, but when you have. Forty-five people and thirty-nine of them are ganging up on seven, you know, and. Even if you agree with the, the thirty-nine, you can't, you, you can't let that happen. You know, there's got to be, there's got to be organization and.
And uh.
Right. And, and that's where the chairperson, like in my case, I just had to adjourn the meeting because it. Couldn't get control of it. So I mean, we had control of it, but it wasn't, it wasn't going well. Wasn't, we weren't conducting good business at that point. We want to be efficient here.
Any further discussion on the. The rules?
The only thing that I, and again, I know we have this little section of. To a one, two, three, four, five, but I almost think it would be nice to have. The definition of conflict of interest. From the attorney, maybe in an index like referred to somewhere else in the, there's an index and same with the ex parte communications. Um, a definition of that as well. I think both of those two things are probably two of the biggest. Things that the public would find deceiving um, for the planning commission. And I think to have both of those. Clearly defined somewhere in an index or something um, from the attorneys would be very helpful.
Yeah, if you.
I was just gonna say, uh, Brian, are. Are those terms defined in our definitions portion of our zoning ordinance? Because if they're not, maybe that would be the right spot to put them. Just a thought.
On page nine of fourteen, it's funny because it says right in here. Uh, conflict of interest is defined by Michigan law. And then on section B, it talks about physically you're moving yourself from where the committee sits and sitting in the audience.
Those are.
Those.
Yeah. So those are the old ones.
Yeah. I just think that those two are two huge. Pieces for pop people in the public, you know, residents of the community. As allegations that could come up. And I think for those of us sitting here are two things that we could really use some clear as we can get definitions from.
Yeah, I'll ask him about that.
I think it would be nice to have them pulled out instead of those four.
Yeah.
Numbers there like, cause it could be taken. It says it's not solely those things, but I think people could take it as only those things. And I just think. To have a better definition somewhere else that it refers to would be better.
I think both, both and could be helpful to count the definition and examples.
Yep. Agreed to the definition and.
Yeah.
And sorry, did we want something to be added about? Spouse or family members in this list of five, or did you want me to ask the attorney on there?
I would.
Thoughts on that?
I think we. You want to say personal relationship could include, but not limited to spouse, family members, coworkers, neighbors. I mean, just put some examples down there.
I like that.
I mean, children, you know, I mean.
Well, yeah.
A lot of people that you could really.
That's why he's saying not limited to. I think that there's, there's somewhat of a respect here and believing that the person's going to say, yeah, I have a, I have a close relationship with that person or. That's my cousin, but I've only seen him once in the last 10 years. I know. I mean, there's.
Right. But that's our take is again, separate, but that is something that could be happening outside of here and none of us would know. You know, I mean, you, we can have no idea that, you know, your neighbor could be talking to you about a subject we're talking about. Filling you with information and none of us would know that side of it, you know?
Well, that's why I think we as board members should. Err on the side of over, over protective than, you know, if there's any hint, like just. Just remove yourself. I mean, your vote, just go out and sit in the audience.
An ex parte can be completely different. That's why, I mean, it's two totally different subjects that I'm talking about, but I know we have had somebody sitting in this room saying. Speaking of clear examples of ex parte communications and feeling that it was okay. And I don't think they were okay, the clear examples that were given to us.
It's a good point. I think we've often discussed ex parte as talking to each other, but it's really not just talking to each other groups. It's anybody with. Knowledge of what we're discussing outside of a public.
It is, it, you know, and the idea is that if my neighbor came to me because they saw something on here and found out I was on the planning commission. And chewing my ear about something and giving me all this information, I should be able to stop them and say, there's, you know, public comment at the meeting. We'll encourage you to come. You'll have your time to speak in front of everybody. I can't be the only one to hear this. We need everybody to hear what you're saying. We welcome you to come and stop the conversation. I shouldn't be listening to that and having my view swayed without anybody else here being able to. Ask questions, clarifying questions that we all have different perspectives and to be able to ask that and hear the same thing. And so I.
Or worse if you're, and bring it here for us to like.
Yeah. Or pretend like, yeah, like I know what I'm talking about and it's all just hearsay that my neighbor told me.
Right.
You know, I mean, it can happen. And I think that we have had somebody given a clear example of it at a meeting. And think that it was okay because they felt they were speaking on behalf of somebody that didn't want to come to a meeting. And I, that is clearly to me, ex parte communications, and I don't think it should be allowed. So that's where I think we do need a clear definition.
Well, and see, I would like to take that scenario a little further too and say, you know, it might be helpful if that person does come. To excuse the board member because it gets them off the hook with their neighbor as well. I mean, to be honest, we, you know.
Right.
What we do here can affect. So, but you know, you sit there and neighbor go, listen, I, I, it's a conflict. You're my neighbor. I got pulled. There's nothing I can do about it.
Right.
But if you guys vote and say, oh no, it's fine. Well, now.
Well, and it depends on the, uh, one on your relationship with your neighbors, you know.
Well.
On what the subject is, if it's something we're voting on, or if they're just coming to complain about something.
Yes.
For lack of a better word, you know, I shouldn't be one coming here, bringing up. Sitting in this chair, a complaint that my neighbor told me, they should be coming here and telling us that.
Okay. Doesn't work like that. You know that.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
The one thing I'd like to comment on is oftentimes I will go out to a site. That is being considered for a change of some sort. And uh, I'll park my car and I'll go look at the property. And sometimes the owner, homeowners comes out and says, who are you and what you up to? And they want to talk. Uh, I guess the question is, what do you do at that point? You say, you know, I'm on the cascade, uh, planning commission. And uh, walk away, or do you listen to what they have to say at that point, even though it's not part of? You know.
Our previous. Conduct rule said we should not partake in conversation.
Yeah.
And, and I think, I feel that that's probably how it should be, but I think we have to find a polite way to say it.
Yeah, exactly. I think said fact finding.
Yeah.
So it's okay to listen if you're collecting facts, but where the problem comes in is when they ask you. Well, do you think this would be, you know, if I move it this way, do you think I can get approval to have it here instead of here? That's where the problem comes in. And that's you say, hey, I can listen to what you, yeah, I can listen to what you're saying. And, and then when you come back here, you can say, I talked to Fred and he told me that he's willing to put this. Ten feet further away from the lot line, uh, you know, but I mean, you, you would have to disclose anything that he provided to you.
Well, and hopefully they would be here to be able to.
Absolutely.
Because that's the other thing. I think when you go out there, part of fact finding is maybe saying, can you show me that they came up to? Can you show me exactly where you're going to put the pole barn? I'd like to see where, you know, that's not.
Yeah, I think those are kind of appropriate questions. If you need to know, right? What's going in or, you know, what, what are you adding again, or where will it be? And then like I said, keep besides that, keeping it very minimum, letting them know, you know, please come to the meeting and provide any. Else or that's where we'll have conversations on. It's just being clear and polite to them about minimizing conversations besides just some of those basic fact questions.
If you're quick enough, nobody will ever catch you.
We're in the middle of the night.
Pine stone like, oh, I gotta check something out there.
I have two dogs and people walking around my property would not be good.
I've.
Brian, I have a side note on this application and walking around on people's property without really letting them know when you're there. In our application, does it include a line where they approve? Planning commission members to do site visits without trespassing?
So we asked the attorney and that's essentially they're giving us their approval when they apply for something. I don't know if it's specifically. I don't know if it's specifically put on the application. So maybe it's something we should add a line clarifying that. But basically they're giving us their approval since they're applying for it, that we need to be able to get the facts and see.
And are we required to knock on their door and say who we are and what we're here and show them our planning commission?
And I think. I know, and it does. Member, uh, or member, former planning director Peterson, that's what I'm supposed to call him. He, I guess, community, community development director Peterson, that's right. I'm sorry, former community, community director Peterson mentioned that he would have that conversation with the applicant that we may be stopping by to make a site visit at the time that they applied. He verbally communicated that to them, at least that's what he told the planning commission. So maybe if you, it, it may be good for you to mention that to them as well.
Yeah, I would like to see it in writing so they understand that they did give us permission to.
I sure, I think it should be both because I do think it should be in writing from a, a legal standpoint, but I think it should also be mentioned because a lot of times you get those long documents and you just click the box at the bottom that you read that I would never do that, but that you read the document, say, you know, it could happen.
And it should probably put a timeframe in there, you know, from between the hours of nine and six or whatever, because you know, you don't want.
During general business.
I mean.
You may go on the weekend.
Too deep in this man's house. I'm not nine o'clock late.
I, I will say this, that as a matter of format, if you're going to go out and do some onsite investigation, you better take the tag.
Yeah, right.
As your commissioner, planning commissioner.
Absolutely.
And be, have it in your pocket or clipped to your shirt. So when they come out, this happened around here probably five times.
Yeah.
I go over there and Juicy would say, can I help you? What do you want? And then I pull out my name tag and say, I'm with the planning commission. Oh, okay. You know.
How do I get one of those?
We can get you one.
No. Don't have one?
He needs a tag.
Oh, my goodness.
I got him his nameplate.
Yeah, I got him my nameplate.
You know, you can just take that way.
Down too.
We got nothing on the park. Just take your nameplate with you and you'll be fine. You got a map right away, you don't have anything to complain about.
Map?
I didn't get an ID card for like seven years.
Okay, anything else on the rules of conduct or whatever they call it?
They're longer now.
Under four B, public hearing procedure, they list the procedure as chairperson opening the public hearing and then the applicant, then applicant presenting or township staff presenting. We obviously do that first. I'll ask them if they see an issue with that, but I think it works well where we staff presents it first. So everyone can hear it, ask questions of the applicant and then open the public hearing, so.
I, I agree. Do we need to be that specific about the, the normal? I mean, because this talks about public hearing procedure, but do we really need to have the specifics of the order of our, our agenda on here too? It seems, that's not really part of the public hearing part of the meeting. That's the organization of the meeting.
I think it's kind of saying the same thing. It's just, we ask them to speak and then we open hearing. I think this is saying open public hearing and they're the first public member that speaks. So I think it's splitting hairs, we're really doing the same thing.
It does, it does much in the staff presenting after all of that, though, in their order, which I think it helps to do the staff presentation first.
I agree, I agree. And I, I guess that's what I'm saying is if this is talking about the, the public hearing procedure, I, I view that as the, the section of public hearing, not the, not, not the meeting procedure. And I, I think we're, we're getting into the meeting procedure, which I don't think is really relevant here.
However, it's worded in here, I'd like to keep it the way we've been doing, I think it works really well.
You know, because in fact, as this is, is written, it doesn't match what we're doing now either because we do public comment at the end of the meeting also. And I, and I don't think we want to have to get into a situation where amending our, amending this to amend the agendas.
Yeah. You want me to ask if just taking out that A part where they're listing the order of business?
They need to strike A and then B becomes A and then we need to modify the new A, which is the current B, to not be as, as.
Just to match how we currently.
Yeah, it match how we currently do it.
Totally. You lost me right there, we went to the second.
The one I'm trying to be specific.
The one other one I noted was on section five, meeting conduct and participation. It, it, how it describes it is it focuses on all questions going through the chairperson where we pretty much allow, you know, any planning commission member to ask a question when they want. I don't know if the sections even necessarily needed or if planning commission members feel strongly or not, or if we can ask them to strike this one as well.
Well, we have to be recognized by the chair to ask the question, don't we? To the applicant.
I believe we're supposed to be.
We try, we try to, yeah.
I'm not very good at it at all.
Here we should explicitly not debate, if you like.
All questions and comments shall be directed to or through the chairperson.
That would be just weird.
And the other thing is if you're asking the applicant, applicant a question and they would be responding to the person who asked the question, not the chair.
I would think so.
Just weird.
It does, that was my thought, it sounded a little strange as written.
Have to ask them what I just asked you and that's just weird.
I think we're a little bit more open and I think that that creates better harmony with the citizens the way we conduct our meetings.
Yeah.
And I understand the organization here, but I think for ninety-nine percent of our meetings, the way we're doing them works well. I mean, I'm looking out at a room with no one in it tonight. Uh, how many people are on Zoom, Jessica? Zero at the moment. I mean, that's how boring we are. So I, you know, I would say that in, in our situation, the way we're operating, I think works pretty good. I don't think it's bad to have a suggested procedure that the chairperson can point to in the event that we have an issue or we have a member that is consistently causing a challenge for the chairperson to chair the meetings. But I.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I was, I, I think clarifying it to the chairperson may recognize members to ask questions.
Right.
Because your point, if a member is just peppering questions, maybe the chairperson's not going to recognize them or recognize somebody else first.
Exactly. The chairperson might say, hey, you know what, you've talked forty-five minutes tonight.
Yeah.
Take, take a break.
Yes, change it to when recognized by the chairperson, commission members or staff, when recognized by the chairperson may direct questions to the applicant or the.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then all questions or comments may be directed at.
We just strike that other line.
I think striking that.
Planning commission or just in general.
Yeah, and I like recognizing the questions or comments when recognized by the chairperson can be made.
Debate.
So interesting. We've had some.
But, and I don't know if that should be in there.
I almost think we should strike that.
I, I, well, that's what I'm looking at, because.
I think a fair debate is very open and.
Well, like. A conversation with hypotheticals could be, could be exactly that, but it could be, you know, interpreted as a debate.
I would say much of our conversation or debate really is never towards a, a project or case. It's usually about procedural things we're debating about. And I think it's appropriate to debate things like this, the merits of whether or not A is better than B.
Right.
The liquor license that we just approved, remember, we talked about that and said, why don't we just do a special use permit for the liquor? And let's see how it goes the next couple of years and then, and that was a debate.
That was right. Very much a debate.
So I think that needs to be.
And in the end, everybody agreed with it and the township board went along with what we, what we, you know, said to them, so.
And there was nothing negative about it.
No, striking that line.
Even applicant was happy with the outcome, so I.
It was nice because they could answer questions.
Right, right. Right.
I, I.
Our process is working, I don't think we need to tweak it that much.
And I think if there was something the public did want to hear, they would appreciate it.
And if our debate goes on too long, then the chairperson can rein us back in.
Yeah, so change the questions as long as they're recognized by that, can ask all of their comments, we want to strike that whole line, that all questions or comments shall be directed to or through the chairperson. And then I would strike, commission members should not debate.
I agree.
What about D, when he said, you're talking about the chairperson will individually recognize? Because typically they just, does anybody have anything to say, doesn't individually recognize each person?
I think that's actually, I think he usually does, like he'll look.
Good point, he'll point to us.
We make eye contact, I feel like.
Right.
Go through the room, especially on something that would be.
Yeah, I don't think we like kind of officially go down the line.
Okay.
We, you know, make an effort to.
Yeah.
Kind of acknowledge every person.
Made to make sure that everybody has said what they wanted.
See, and I, I look at, when I read that, I didn't think the kismet eye contact thing. I thought it's, you know, you, you go down the person, do you have any, do you have any, do you have anything, but.
I know I try to keep an eye open if somebody's, you know, doing this or doing this.
Yeah.
Then I try to recognize them right away.
Ralph, I, I know you haven't chaired too many meetings as vice chair, but you're doing a, a fine job. Don't worry. These aren't being written because of your conduct.
Okay, any other comments on rules of conduct?
Last, last one, I guess, they listed as rules of procedure, do we, does anyone have a strong opinion if it's rules of procedure or rules of conduct?
I would prefer rules of conduct because I think that's what we all want to see.
So these are more procedural now, though.
They are a little, they added some.
Getting into more procedures, so I, if they're like the way we have them now, I tend to like rules of procedure better.
The only, and Winnie, I don't care, but the only thing is if you change the name, it definitely looks like it's a different document now, right? Because the old one was conduct and now this one's procedure, so it's. It's optics, but I don't care.
Yeah, I don't care either.
Leave it for now.
Sure. We'll just have to make a note when we approve it, finalize it, that we are replacing rules of conduct.
Can you?
Formerly known as.
Can you put parentheses formally conduct? That may.
Okay.
Mister Chair. Can I ask about number seven? And forgive me if I'm just not. This is interesting as it states acceptance of gifts as used here, a gift shall mean cash, any tangible item or service, regardless of value, and food valued over ten dollars. Why is it that anything regardless of value, except, except for food under ten dollars? I'm, I'm curious, does anybody know why food is valued at ten dollars and anything else is, it doesn't matter what? It's, it could be worth two dollars and you can't get it, but if it's food under ten, a slice of pie is okay.
I took it as coffee with inflation.
I was just curious why food has a dollar amount tied to it and nothing else does.
Lots of food.
Nobody has any idea on that?
I mean, you're proud of.
And I'm thinking home baked things maybe don't fall under the, over ten dollars. That's the only thing I could think of, somebody brings cookies.
While you're walking this way and they offer you.
I don't know.
I just thought, it just struck me as a strange thing to, you know, because it says specifically regardless of value in food valued over ten dollars.
You don't keep food long.
Is that what it is? Do we need to adjust that with inflation every, so often? I mean.
I put it to Tony now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I took you out. I think they're trying to say like a meal. So I, and again, it needs to be adjusted for inflation, but I think that what they're trying to say is none of these things are a meal. So I couldn't take you out to dinner. If you're, you know, versus me bringing free brownies for everybody.
And, and maybe it, it refers to B too, the, you know, like the value of ten dollars, the provision of food in connection with meaning strain, you know, and so that they're saying if B is satisfied, it's got to be under ten dollars. Right?
Oh, okay.
And I don't, maybe.
We've never had any of these things, to my knowledge, come up. You know.
And we're kind of joking, but I mean, I would be just as happy to take out the, and food.
Me too.
Like we're, we've never.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it just seems like a strange thing to have in there.
Yeah, and food.
And, and food will take, will take out the value of over ten dollars.
Yeah, I think that's the safest thing to do is just, it's fine.
And.
Taking out the, and food part.
Leaving the, and food and taking out the value of ten dollars.
I mean, I guess if, if, if you go to talk to somebody on their site and they give you a cup of coffee, now I'm thinking, yeah, I can see where he's going with that, that kind of.
You can always politely, thank you, but no.
I think if we're really thirsty, it was a big hike up the hill. Exactly, I could really use some water, you know?
Tell you that the environment I personally work in, in their certain facilities where if you're in their cafeteria and you're offering to buy them a coffee, they have to say, I'm sorry, I have to play the decline, I have to purchase my coffee.
Yeah.
You know, it's two dollar cup of coffee, babe, so that's what you have to say here.
I, I'm okay with it being in there, I don't care. I just, I thought it was strange, that's all. I was curious why it says regardless of value and then, but food's okay.
I think in the context of what we're dealing with, I don't know if it's necessary. I think it's just easier to take it out. It's so unlikely that it's going to come up.
Yeah.
Just err on the side of.
Right.
Don't accept it.
Yes, well, if you're dying of thirst, you can't take.
Bring your water bottle.
And a coffee then too. So beer.
Really?
I just need a garden hose. I'll be okay. Just give me a garden hose.
Okay, any other comments on item seven or eight?
Chair, I rest.
Any other comments? Okay, try that to close then, move on to the next item. Article ten, old business and the old business. Not noted, let's move on to article eleven, any other businesses? Do you have something here that I cast out to all of you regarding the subcommittee for the implementation of recommendations? For those people who are going to be on that subcommittee, I also gave you a detailed agenda of what I'll be talking about. For the others who are not on the subcommittee, I gave you the simplified one-page agenda, what we'll be covering. Just like to say, first of all, who's on the subcommittee includes Timmy Nordhook, Ellen Rowland, Scott Reese, and Ben, plus myself, and Chris Nord, Nordite will be our alternate, should one of us not be able to make it for whatever reason. I would like to hold the meetings at the new township hall, not in this facility, but over at the new township hall so that we can better coordinate with Brian and with Ben. And I've already, we've got a meeting coming up here, our first meeting, kind of an organizational meeting, will be this Wednesday at four o'clock. I like to hold the meetings on Wednesdays at four o'clock, near the end of the day, so it's not in the middle of business. And for those of you who are working, then you can kind of catch the meeting on your way home. I did meet with Ben briefly and talk about that general approach and he seemed appreciative of the fact that we're going to meet with him at the offices rather than him and having to get in the car and come over here and meet in this facility in here. My goal is to meet every two weeks, same time, same place. Some meetings might be a little bit longer than others, but I'll try to get, you know, the detailed agendas out to you in advance so that you can kind of chew on it. And if you have comments that you want to send back to me in advance, you can do that. Scott Reese is offered to be our secretary, which I greatly appreciate.
Can I add a correction there? I was asked to be secretary, I did not offer.
Okay, but he accepted.
I did, I did accept, I did accept.
It was the stucky now.
Valen told to do something.
Ralph, I've been. Ben, you're willing to provide software services?
Yes.
Okay, software planning.
Sure.
That's kind of your thing.
Kind of falls into my area of my repertoire.
Wheelhouse.
As as the other Ben, Ben Swayze would say, I think a lot of what we have outlined can be accomplished with good software. And the software program they're using over at the billing inspection department is great. I forget the the name of it. You know, do you remember what it is?
Yeah, BSNA.
BSNA. Okay, sounds like a motorcycle, but. I'll. I think that would help us a lot if we can kind of follow that format and just start outlining all the things that need to be done. And then if you could help us plug it in and just start listing all this and then test it, you know, and I'm sure it'll take several trial runs to get it to all work. So anyway, I appreciate the help. Yes, Scott.
I was just going to ask this is. Planet Hill Brands going to be able to attend as well because I think especially if we're talking about software integration and stuff. Obviously, he's going to be the end user, a lot of that, and it really be helpful if you could attend these meetings as regularly as you can. Because. You know, ultimately, you're the end user of whatever is determined to be, you know, the action taken.
Yeah, I've got I've got this one on my calendar and I'll be trying to be at most of them if not all of them if needed.
Good.
Again, that's the other reason to hold it in the other building.
I I agree. I just wanted to stress then as a member of the as the secretary of this committee, his his presence is is certainly important.
Alan. So this isn't open to the public. So my question is.
It is open to the public.
It's not recorded or videoed, right?
But okay.
Open meeting to.
Yeah, it's posted.
Okay.
And people can come show up.
Okay.
And I already gave that to Brian to put it into the website for the announcement.
So then no problem with me this week, but two weeks from now, spring break. So I don't know if there's anybody else that might be gone. So you may want to push that one. Because it looks like Ben's going to be out too.
Okay, well, that's something we talked about at that first meeting, you know, who's available or who isn't. I cannot do it the following week because I got hip surgery coming up and I'd much rather be at the meeting then.
Do it the week before. And the other thing is. So it's would there be a Zoom link that you could? I mean, obviously I can't participate, but I can listen in now.
They can do Zoom in the office.
I thought we weren't going to do.
We have Zoom in this meeting.
We do here, but you.
At the at the in the.
There's capabilities to I don't know if we'll I don't think it's a requirement to have at the meetings, but for some reason we want to specifically there's capability in our large conference room at the.
We have.
Have to do Zoom.
Okay, and and I I guess I would just throw out that I know for other committee meetings that have taken place in the conference room. If a member is to be absent, they they can ask manager Swayze about potentially. Setting up a Zoom connection for them and he has done that for people before.
And that's fine. And I know that.
There's kind of a. A line to cross. If you're going to set up Zoom for one member to be listening or participating, but not setting it up for all of public to see, I think.
Well, no, at that point, the whole public could go in because it's on Zoom.
Okay. Well, it would depend if you post it and allow people to come in or if it truly.
Well, I think that's why they need to know that in advance.
Well, and my thought would be if we have Zoom capabilities for this and this is open to the public, then we should probably have Zoom for that if it's open to the public. And I understand that if I can't physically be there, then I would like to listen in as a citizen, you know, as as particular. Just so that I don't miss out on the information.
Something we probably should talk about.
Would be able to vote or anything.
Right. I think. We may even be able to get BSNA to come in and do a demonstration and show us how the software works because the township is using it in the building department. And they're also using it for property lookup and assessments. So we're using two parts of their software now. I'm sure they have a third set of soft set of software for us. They could come in and demonstrate and show us how to set up.
We should get a group discount to redo that.
Just saying.
I would think they'd be happy to come in and demonstrate before we went off for another set or another another program. So that's kind of where we're going. Our first meeting this Wednesday will be kind of dealing with those organizational issues. As I see it, and I definitely want Brian to sit in and Ben to sit in because I want. This is all about mission together with them and the thing will then proceed to better organize our approach to review of developers' plans. As we go forward. Okay, any other comments on this?
I had something else.
Me too.
But yes. You're recognized, Wendy.
I was just I had talked to Chris earlier today just to let him know and obviously he wasn't going to be here. So did he email you?
Yes.
Okay, um, on the parks committee, I was voluntold to be on the interview committee for the new director of public works. And the comment was made as well that I also am on the planning commission. So it would be killing two birds with one stone to have me be there. On that. Panel, I guess, for the. Interview process for the director of public works. So since it was mentioned, I had the parks hat on earlier this week thinking about it. And then today I was thinking about playing commission meeting and thinking I wanted to disclose that to everybody so that everybody is aware. I know in previous meetings we had talked about the director, the planning director and wanting somebody from the planning commission to be a part of that process. And I don't think we ever talked about the director of public works. So I just wanted to let everybody know if there are, I don't know. I reached out to Ben Swayze again today to ask him and I'll probably call Grace tomorrow to get specifics on how I've been in hundreds and hundreds of interviews. I've been panel interviews. I've done personal interviews. I don't know how the township does it. I was told today any questions have to be submitted prior to. So if anybody here has any specific questions for this person that you would like me to ask, if I can submit that question to be asked, I will. But the interviews start on Wednesday, Thursday.
So if a train leaves Chicago traveling it.
No kidding. How do you know what to ask?
I I've been pushing for that position not to really be the department of public works, but to be a civil engineer. To bring all of our pathway engineering in house instead of.
And park engineering.
Correct. All that engineering to be done in house by civil engineers. So I'm not really looking for a.
No.
EPW here.
I get it. And I talked to Grace about the logistics of where that kind of title came from because I had similar questions.
Yeah.
Or concerns.
I think I'm getting railroaded out of that, but that's what I want.
Yeah, no, I think that um, as somebody sitting on both of these, you know, even if that person is overseeing a contracted service that we are using for engineering. They need to be able to at least have enough knowledge and background to be able to oversee what we are paying somebody else to do to make sure it's done correctly. And we're getting our money's worth, you know, even if they because if they they might not have the time to do all of the. Engineering, even for the things that we're talking about.
That's. Pathway engineering with our.
I know.
Actual construction of our pathways were 1.3 million.
That was just the extensions, not our pathways.
That was just that for that was just for one year.
Those small extensions.
But there was just under 400,000 in engineering.
I thought it was 800.
I think it's 400, just under 400, but.
I thought it was closer to eight.
And I'm thinking for 400 million, we could hire a civil engineer.
Right, well, in in and this is the last thing I'll say about this topic, but my complaint with that is the new sections of trail. One of the citizens biggest complaints is the current status or the current condition of our trails. And they put in, we spent all this money on engineering for new trails and they are not constructed appropriately. There's standing water in the new sections of trails. There are they are not constructed that we paid four or $800,000 on an engineer to oversee this project. And it is ridiculous how much money we spent with our engineering company.
Correct. And I can't get anybody to tell me how thick that pavement is.
Oh, do you want me to find out?
That would be wonderful.
I will because the sheriff actually shot at a deer in the pavement a couple of times and put some big holes in it. So maybe I can go out there and look at it. I'll get off of soapbox. I think this leads into something else that you. You were going to talk about.
Yeah, this has to do with their interim planning director.
Do we want Brian to leave for a minute?
No.
Okay.
Delete the term interim from Brian Hillbrand's title.
I was just going to ask about that too. It's so crazy. I was going to say like, I don't know if that's old business or new business, but congratulations.
Brian, I I would have brought you a cupcake tonight. They cost over $10. Now, so I can't. I can't. I'll I'll see if I can find an M and M at home to bring it next week or a scuttle.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate that.
That's great news. Well deserved.
That will be finalized at the board meeting, right?
Yep, yeah, Ben's bringing that to the board on Wednesday night.
I was just I was going to mention about engineering debate. I mean, not debate, but discussion. It seems to me that my I I guess I fear that. We have to be careful as a township that we're not putting this person into an impossible situation. Because I kind of get the feeling that we could almost have a full time engineer. And to be putting them under the hat of several other things, I I worry that this person might be, I don't know if overwhelmed is the right term. But they're going to have to be able to to put out some fires because there's going to be stuff coming from all directions until at someday down the road when that position maybe subdivides into, you know, a couple, another category too. But there's certainly it it looks like, and I know this is a a first step for us. And so it makes sense to have it under the umbrella of several other things. But I I could see in the not too distant future that that getting that position being modified. I'm not on the board, but that's how I I see it from the outside.
That's like some of my questions that I have thought of this week are based upon like what I said, I don't think this person's can be able to be the engineer to do a lot of these projects. But they have to have the strength and maybe the experience to be able to oversee projects that we are outsourcing to other people to make sure that they are done correctly. And that they are being helped to see. And so I don't think I I agree with you. I don't think this person's going to be able to do, I mean, just the not even including the trails, but the stuff on the park committee side of stuff that needs to have an engineer look at. The list is long.
Well, and I mean, the engineering we're getting, I don't think is is great, or maybe they just haven't done a good job of describing some of the engineering they've done. For instance, Cascade Road, the pathway extension towards Whitneyville Road at 36th Street. Why do you have to cross the road twice there? It doesn't make sense to you have to cross if you're if you're continuing along Cascade Road to 36th Street. You should just have to cross Cascade Road at 36th Street. You shouldn't have to cross 36th Street and then Cascade Road. They would have had to put in an extra what 15 to 20 feet of pavement and it would have been one less crossing. But for whatever reason, they didn't design it that way.
Asked that specific question at the public meeting for that and was told this is just how it has to be.
And what's the answer I got?
To do something to do with the lights, but it still doesn't make any.
It doesn't make sense.
The other side of the road stops at a certain spot like none of it made any sense.
Right.
You could not get a intelligent.
Right. It doesn't matter which side of the intersection, but the crosswalk. But you but you have to cross the road twice. And you should only need to cross it once.
Well, in in 36th Street to cross there is not a I mean, somebody died there less than a year ago. You know, that is not a safe place to cross to begin with.
And then I had another item I wanted to discuss about minutes would now be a.
One other item kind of related to that. I was driving up Whitneyville Road the other day where it intersects with Cascade. That awkward intersection. Why can't they change that to a 90 degree intersection? Because if you come into that from the south, it's hard to see who's coming from the right.
They're reengineering that intersection. It is being redesigned and reconstructed.
Extending that road.
It is. There's going to be a median there and and they're making they're making some changes. They are, I believe. No, I believe there's a I believe there's actual an actual concrete. Triangle that's going to be placed there. That's what was described to me. I I talked to a property owner that lives right near there. And that's what the road commission pulled them is going in in that area.
Plans because they were out to public before that public meeting. So it should be on there because I know all of the rest of it was in the engineering plans that they released to the public before that meeting.
The bigger problem there is that the section of road from Whitneyville and Cascade to Butrick and Cascade, that little stretch. Has the rest of Cascade Road has been reconstructed, except for that little stretch and the guy from the road commission said, well, we just did that 15 years ago. Now you skipped that section and that asphalt that was.
Done twice.
That section that was put right there had a design life of like seven or eight years because it was a very inexpensive mix. And so that really is bad. It maybe not so much in a nice Cadillac that floats along, but you drive over it in a pickup truck and it's like. Yeah.
Another comment you had?
I did have a comment as a matter of fact about minutes. So the. Let's see, I have to get my titles right here. When we were doing the round hell subcommittee. There were some staffing woes at the township offices and I was. Asked to have all of the information posted online by. Our community economic director Corhorn, who did an outstanding job, by the way, of doing that very quickly. Like I sent her an email and then 20 minutes was on the website. So she did a great job. But I I know the minutes that we approved at our last planning commission meeting need to be put on the website. And I didn't know if the chairman, the vice chairman, myself, who's supposed to handle that if I should send them to Sandra? If you're taking care of that, Brian, and then likewise, the the chair, the chairperson of the new committee. Needs to have some indication. If maybe you guys have already discussed it, I don't know, but needs to have some indication of who he should work with at the township level. Maybe it's Jessica. I don't know who, but there's got to be a person so that when there's a meeting agenda that needs to be posted, that it gets posted. Because the public's got to have access to this information.
You probably just send them to me would be easiest and I'll get them to. Sandra is the one that ultimately puts them on the website, but if you have a question, you can send it to me first and that's no problem.
Okay, so I I sent the meeting, the minutes that were approved. So do I do I guess what I'm asking is do I need to do? Is there any action that needs to be taken on my part for those December and September 20 meeting minutes that were approved or is that automatically going to get handled?
I think no, we can.
I just don't want to be holding that process up.
Nope, we can get on. Were those trying to remember those approved as written or did we just add your name to the bottom as?
Think. Do you need me come in and sign those?
No, I think we've got it. We just added on, but no, we can get those on the website.
That's fine. I'm sure it's been done before.
And it will be done again?
Okay, one other comment I'd like to add is. I thought I had somebody lined up to take the the last seat for the planning commission. He was a fellow I worked with on many projects. He's a construction manager and I did a lot of school projects with him. Probably close to my age, you know, young. And. He lives just on the other side of the river. He had a kid in interest. He was retired. And I submitted his name to Ben and to Grace. And then shortly after that, he said, I just took a job. He says it's part time, but it sounds like he's going to have to work full time, at least for the next month or so to get things under control for this for a new company of some sort. Anyway, I thought he would have been a good addition, constructor manager, nice guy. And I've always enjoyed working with him on some major age of projects where I always see him protect. So, oh darn. If things don't work out with the company he's going to help out, perhaps he'll come back and be considered again. Just wanted to kind of give you an update on and I'm trying to keep my eyes open if I see other opportunities. People that have planning or construction experience. people that have planning or construction experience, I like to pursue them, if that's okay.
No, I think that's excellent, I, I've thought the same, the same thing, I've been trying to find people, I've made some calls to try and see if I can find a good, a good name to throw, but do, does anybody know if, if the supervisor's having difficulty in, in finding a, a person to?
Open to suggestions.
Has that been, is that something that's posted on the website or anything to the public for them to apply?
I mean, that usually, it's, it's a, it's posted publicly, that there's, you know, that you can apply for the position, if you, if you wanna be part of, you know, part of this party up here.
Make millions.
No, no, you can't even get a cupcake these days.
Would it, would it be helpful, and I'm asking a question, because I've got somebody kind of in mind, but he's a, an attorney. I mean, would that be something that we would? I know the last attorney we had, I heard some stories, but. Benefit?
He's still available.
I think we, and I don't know whether this really weighs too much, but I know we had identified at the last meeting, kind of an area in general that maybe we had wanted to find somebody from that resides in that south.
Oh, yes.
We did, we did.
Yeah.
Good call.
So I, you know, in my mind, that's kind of where I was going, I think, that, that was kind of what we had talked about at that meeting. Would it be nice to find somebody in that section that we don't have a representation of to be here?
Has that been passed on to the supervisor?
I think that.
Chairman, the, yes, Chris said he, Chairman Nord, Nordike said he was going to do that, but I guess my question would be, what do we think we need to see here? Do we need a, a legal perspective? Do we need an engineering perspective? A builder's or developer's perspective, what do we wanna see? Because then we can go into that area, and, and, you know, maybe one of us knows, oh, I gotta, you know, I know this guy, he's, you know, customer of mine, he, he could do that, and then we could reach out, drop some names.
For me, I just feel like being an active member of the community is important. You know, somebody who cares about Cascade, who wants to be making things better, is more important than a job title, in my opinion. I just feel that, you know, we have Brian, and we have, we will hopefully have an engineer from the township that are paid employees, that are supposed to be here to help inform us of certain things that if you don't understand, we have, you know, council that's hired from the township. That's my opinion, is I truly feel the Planning Commission should be members of the citizens of Cascade Township that care about the community, that wanna be an active, positive part of the community, and that's my feelings. Yeah, and, and use businesses, and, you know, all of those important things that that are just why you're here, is to make the decisions, and to, and we're here to represent the citizens of Cascade. I'm not here to represent what I do during the day, and, and matter of fact, I think there's something in even our new rules of procedures, that it mentions something about you're, you're not a representation of your employment, or so, it said something to that effect, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I think that's what's important to me, somebody who cares.
And I think recruiting the best new member really starts with posting it publicly, and then having all of us recruit people that we know that we think would be good to publicly reply or respond to that public posting. And then, I don't have a specific wish list, but I think the more candidates that we get, and ultimately, it's supervisor's call, but.
Right.
I think the more people we have, makes it a very open process, and hopefully, more candidates leads to the best person who joins.
I agree.
And I truly, I don't, and I don't know why it's frustrating to me, but when we talk about what people do during the day, we're not supposed to represent what we do during the day when we come here. We are representations of the citizens of Cascade, and that is who is supposed to make up this committee. And I feel that way about our other committees within the township, and I think part of being a citizen of the community and seeing some frustration is when you see things veered towards, oh, we need, you know, five attorneys on this, and we need this, and we need that, and it's like, do we really? Because we're supposed to represent the, the citizens of Cascade, and not 50% of our, our residents are not attorneys. So, why are we picking somebody as an attorney to be a representation as a, as a focus of that? You know, I mean, our, our citizens are made up of all different types of people, all different colors of people, all different backgrounds of people, all different careers, and I think that we need somebody that represents the community.
Any other comments?
You know, I was just saying an attorney, just because of legal.
I don't know, I mean.
But you know what, it begs the question, I mean, I love the district that, that's underserved, that, 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 that's a great, but I mean, you know, a business owner too, I mean, we don't have anybody who's a business owner.
And I will say, I know somebody.
Are you in Cascade?
Have to think about that. No.
I was gonna say. I was gonna say, I think I know a business owner who is in that, in that geographical area, and an active business owner within Cascade. Our daughters went to middle school together, and we're friends, so.
Oh, there's a conflict.
You don't even know his name, I know the business. So, I, I was gonna pass that, that business along to Grace, so maybe she'd go there and knock on the door and ask, I don't know.
I just said I'm one of the business owners. I own, I own a couple businesses and.
I think you need to, we need to have that side of things.
Real estate inspections.
Okay, so that's the business.
Most of our customers are in Cascade, and their business is actually located, just outside Cascade.
Move on to Article 12, acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. Is there anybody out there who would like to make a comment that I'm not seeing?
Just a reminder, just a reminder that we don't have our first meeting in April, because it's spring break, so our next one will be April 18.
Okay, with that, I'd like to adjourn, can I have a motion?
So move.
All favor say aye?
Aye.